I would like to welcome you all to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, August 7th. Will you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shatky, can you call the roll?
I'd love to.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Shatky, I am here. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Mathias.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
President Faub.
Present.
We're all here. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I'd like to request that we separate administrative appointments from the consent agenda.
Okay, you can make that motion when the consent agenda comes.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
We have a motion for approval of the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Flau, first on our agenda or celebrations?
Dr. Faub and members of the board, I would like to ask for John and Michelle to come forward to share about the Student Advancement Foundation.
Good evening, President Faub, members of the board, Superintendent Wetherall Neal. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is one of my favorite parts every year, when we get to really share the remarkable things that Michelle Sahoski and her board and her staff have done on behalf of our students. You're going to hear in just a second how it's been a banner year in fundraising, and as we've asked more and more of them, and we've worked closer and closer, you're starting to see those fruits because the donor community is responding well, the board and the requests that we're putting forth are responding very favorably, and it's just a very exciting time with the partnership between GRPS and SAF. So I just want to say thank you to Michelle and her team, and turn it over.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Happy August. I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation. I'd like to take just a quick second to introduce a couple of guests. First, sitting back here is Max Gibbs, who is on our Board of Directors, and he also served on our Grants Committee this year, as well as Selena Bishop, who's sitting to my right. She is our Manager of Communications and Grants in the Student Advancement Foundation. We are truly privileged to serve as the fundraising partner of Grand Rapids Public Schools and are so excited to see all the wonderful opportunities that GRPS provides to our students and are so fortunate to be just a small part of that success. Thank you to you, the Board of Education, and to all the teachers and staff who work so hard on behalf of our community's children every day. Today is also one of my favorite days of the year. The Student Advancement Foundation is presenting our school year 2017-18 General Fund Grants, which help to fund programs and needs in every building and every grade across the school district. These grants represent the dollars raised by the hundreds of community members who give to the Student Advancement Foundation through our annual Foundation for the Future Luncheon and March here each year. The 2017-18 School Year General Fund Grants include funding for art classroom supplies, funding support for the 21 district-wide robotics teams, and funding to underwrite elementary enrichment trips to community treasures like the Grand Rapids Civic Theater, the Grand Rapids Art Museum, and Blanford Nature Center. These grants total over $245,000 this year. Thank you again for allowing us to be part of this truly exceptional school district. We are so excited to see the amazing things our students will accomplish over the upcoming year.
Questions for Michelle? Comments?
Just thanks so much, and I do want to, I do want to use this as an opportunity for those people that don't know how much Max Gibbs gives to this district is pretty remarkable. So you've got a great volunteer on your board. Yeah, I know what that means. It means, it means a lot of great free labor. And what the board gets to see that the public doesn't get to see is how electrified his socks are.
That's right. Love it.
So anyway, so it's fantastic work, but again, I just, it's amazing how many times I run into Max doing good things in the city. So here he is again, so.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Michelle, and your leadership. It's been awesome. You've got a great team. Welcome, Selena, and it's, we're really, really fortunate to have you in our corner.
Thank you so much.
You certainly are. Thank you very much.
All right, no student representative, public comment for agenda items? We have none. Okay, Secretary's report.
All right, just two items this evening. First, the city's first and second wards are holding a primary election for a seat on the Grand Rapids City Commission. This election will take place tomorrow, that's Tuesday, August 8. Polls are open at 7:00 a.m. and will close at 8:00 p.m. Each ward has three candidates. The two that gain the most votes move on to a runoff election on November 7, or if one candidate gains 50% of the vote for their respective seat, they are automatically elected. So please get out, use your voice, and vote tomorrow. And next, the first day of school at the Grand Rapids Public Schools is Monday, August 28. That's three weeks from today.
Don't be late.
Don't be late on August 28. If you are new to the area and need to register your child, please contact the Community and Student Services Department at 616-819-2150 for enrollment information. Orientations have also begun, so please contact your child's school for additional information. That's my report.
Thank you. We have no committee chair updates. Superintendent's report.
Dr. Faub and members of the board, I'd like to ask John Hempholt to come forward, please. Back to school.
Sure. We have our big back-to-school celebration coming up on August 17, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are at John Ball Park Zoo, and again, we have, all the schools will be represented. We also have been doing, if you haven't heard the, the radio ads yet, is the, the big ad promotion campaign with "Don't Be Late" on August 28. It's as catchy, almost as catchy as the zoo-museum-millage ditty. We tried to kind of model that. There was one winner, but we ended up playing the four finalists because they were just all so, so well-done. And we're just excited to kick off another school year. It seems like it's right around the corner. We're three weeks away from August 28, so start of school will be here quickly, and there'll be opportunities for any of you, as we have a stage for three hours, there'll be various activities up on the stage at the back-to-school celebration. Love to get you all out there, get you up on stage, say a few words, and just welcome you to a great event. Usually about 5,000 people show up for this. We think it's going to be even bigger this year.
That's awesome. Cool.
The public loves to see board members on that stage.
That's right. What time does it start, John? Japanese.
August 17, 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay. I gotta make a note to myself that I don't forget here. All right, we have several action items here. We'll try to move that, through them as quickly as possible. First item we have is approval of the Student Advancement Foundation grants that were, so, just shared with us. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Any concerns, deliberations? Let's take the vote. All right, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
And President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is a resolution authorizing operating millage renewal.
Can we ask for some clarification on that and an education opportunity before we do that?
Good evening, Dr. Faub, Superintendent Wetherall Neal, committee members, board members. We have to, we need your approval to authorize, reauthorize the 18-mill non-homestead operating millage, which expires for the district on December 31st of this year. The current operating millage was approved eight years ago. It was an eight-year millage at 19 mills. And what this does is this, this is a tax on, on all non-homestead property, so second homes and businesses primarily. Single homeowners, it's not, it does not impact them all, impact them at all from a tax perspective. We need this, to approve this to ensure our total state aid every year. The maximum millage we can levy by law are 18 mills. We're asking for, in this resolution, for 19 mills over 10 years. The reason we ask for 19 is in case we have what's known as a headly rollback, so there is a, there is a statutory restriction as to how much property values can go up each year, and if they go up greater than the headly amount essentially, then the authorized mills are rolled back to a lower level. And so, asking for an additional mill protects us to ensure that we get our full 18 mills, even if, even if there is a, a headly rollback. So we need this resolution approved so we can get it in the ballot for November, and it'll be effective then for the first tax collection in 2018. As I mentioned, again, it's, it's critical we have this so that we are insured of our full state aid, because state aid is, as you know, as we've talked before, is, is partially, foundational allowance, partially funded for, from the state, and partially funded from this 18-mill non-homestead local assessment. And if we, if we assess less than 18 mills, the state doesn't make it up. That's, that's what we're asking for tonight.
May I ask? It says here something about a, part of it being captured by the City of Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority, City of Grand Rapids Brownfield Authority, Grand Rapids Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority. Can you explain that a little bit to me?
I'll do my best. There are, again, by law, there are certain, what we call tax recapture units in the government, and several are mentioned in the resolution. And what that does is that by law, any increase in property values, a property located in those tax increment units, like a downtown development authority, they capture the increase in property values from a base year, which generally is the year they were incorporated, to the current year. So they, they capture those taxes, they get it, the district does not get that, those, those tax, I mean, the millage on that property value increase in those particular districts. So that's, that's required for the ballot language to let the voters know that there are tax increment district within the boundaries of our district, and some of that, those increased property values, the additional tax that those values generate, we don't get all of it.
Okay, so may I just follow up then?
Sure.
So it's just these, like the downtown, the Brownfield Authority, the Grand Rapids Smart Zone, those would be the only places where the buildings would be in those areas, where if their assessments go up, then they get the money?
Those the only areas where, yeah, that they, that they can capture that incremental property values?
And that's required by law?
That's required, yeah. They were authorized by law and, and, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Oberst?
Yeah, how does this get communicated in the campaign? Because I know it's kind of like, just this question here is kind of a complicated answer. It doesn't, it's just, from my pers, it's just simply the way we fund schools in the state of Michigan, and we have to do this, but it doesn't, but it's not like we're choosing to, to do an extra millage to support.
Exactly. I mean, certainly a challenge has been the last year and a half within the district. We've gone to the voters for the bond a year and a half ago, which was successful, and we had the enhancement millage countywide in May. I think historically, we've gone to our voters for this operating millage in a May election. We obviously wanted to avoid that because enhancement millage, which were successful. So, yeah, I mean, to the general public, they may, may not understand that, this, and see it as another, oh my gosh, asking for more money, but in fact, it's just a routine reauthorization. So, you know, I think, you know, John, the discussion we had internally is, you know, we'll, we'll, the campaign will be much like the enhancement millage or the bond millage. We'll go out with informational campaign informing the voters just what this is and the importance of a yes vote on this in November.
Thank you. Is there good questions? Okay.
Something to add there.
I would just echo what Mr. Oberst said. Again, this is, you don't, we don't take any election lightly, right? So, you know, even though the super voters, these are more your likely municipal voters, many of whom have voted on these non-homesteads, they believe or not understand what non-homestead is, and we're going to be doing a lot to educate them, that this is not a new tax, and this is not a property tax that you are likely paying. If you, it's not a tax on your home, this is on, on your non-homestead industrial businesses, rental properties, and this is something that we actually anticipate getting the support from the rental property owners and others who are actually paying this. They came out and endorsed our last bond campaign. We have a lot of support throughout the community right now. Our job is just simply to get the word out. There's not a lot on the ballot. You have a transit renewal that will be up in November as well, and then we have yet to see what the outcome of these elections, but third ward is going to be, there's a contested race in the third ward that is going to November. First ward and second ward may be decided tomorrow night, or they may go to a runoff. And so, once we know that, that may change how our strategy and approach will be, but this was actually the first campaign I worked on when I was hired here nine, almost 10 years ago, and I think we won by, you know, 70%. So, and that was a very simple informational campaign to let voters know what it is that they're voting on.
Great. There's no more questions. Can we have a motion for approving the resolution?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. If Mr. Clump parents maybe can come down and give us a little, oh, you're going to do it. He's already down here. He's already, it'll take you a long time, go for it, yeah.
The next item there is the extension of the purchase option on Pine Avenue property on the west side. Kent County Land Bank was the optionee on the option, and actually, I think in your materials, the original option that was signed a year ago was, was included there, just to refresh your memory. That option, the land bank was, was going to acquire the land with the intent of having, I believe, the dwelling place then to apply for low-income housing tax credits and build some low-income or affordable housing, if you will, on that site as part of that, that acquisition. The original option expired on July 31st of this year. Mr. Clump parents and I had some dialogue with, with the land bank representatives. They asked for an extension on the option. They did apply for a low-income housing credits. However, they, they had several projects they were asking for these credits, and they, all the projects were not fully funded, this being one of them. So they are assessing right now whether to reapply in October, which they probably will. So in order to retain the ability to acquire this property, they asked for the extension on this option to February 28th of 2018. Now, the original option had a appraisal value, a sale price, based on an appraisal value of $295,000. We're in the process, now that we discussed this in our last meeting or the Finance Committee, right now of reappraising our vacant properties, and so the option language would include what the soon-to-be-determined current fair market value would be for that price. And Ken, I think we intend to have those completed end of this month or thereabouts. And so, really, that option extension is extended to February 28th, 2018, at the most current appraised value. Everything else in the option agreement is, is unchanged. The land bank's still the same, same use of the property for affordable housing construction.
Questions for Mr. Oberst regarding that? Can I have a, a motion for approval of the extension?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. And next is the purchasing agenda, but don't go away.
Yeah, also.
Do we have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Support for that?
Support.
Any discussion? Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. Can you help us with the next item? Or is that a Mr. Clump?
That's a Mr. Clump.
All right, you're going to come down here anyway, Ken.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening. When we bid the main bid package for the museum high school, which we presented last board meeting, there were three bid categories that we didn't get enough bid, we didn't get two bids to open, so we rebid them, and that's what's brought back to you tonight. In fact, the masonry bid, we bid three times and still only got one bidder, so we've worked with purchasing and followed the process to have non-bidders submit a document why they did not bid to justify taking the one bid. But masonry is a difficult trade to get right now. This is a rather small piece of masonry, and it was hard to get bidders.
We know, don't we, Ken? We do, yes. Any questions regarding this? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support for that?
Second.
If there's no discussion, take the vote. Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
And President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a resolution for a probationary teacher's non-renewal. Do we need some questions from Ms. Pitts? Is everybody clear on this? If you like.
Is this separate from the?
Yes. Is this separate from that? Okay, if there's no questions, do I have a, a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Please take the vote. All right, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. So we have a series of policies coming out of the Policy Committee. I will have Chair of the Policy Committee describe the changes made, and then I'll ask for a motion.
All right, our first policy this evening is 1570, the Review of Administrative Regulations. This policy had two changes to it, so the last paragraph was rather redundant, so we cleaned that up, and then we did add that all rules will be published in the student handbook, which was missing from that policy.
Do we have a motion for approval of the first reading of Bylaw 1570?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Great, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, the next policy is 3680, so meal, meal charges, and this is the first reading
of this. So this is a new policy that was required by the Michigan Department of Education. We are a supplier of food services to other districts, and so this sets forth a policy on how we charge for that service, student balances, et cetera.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
I just have a question, please. Don't the kids in Grand Rapids Public Schools get?
Yeah.
Free lunches?
They do. Great question. Yep, so this policy really is because we are a provider to other districts, but students in our district would not have any remaining balances, nor would we charge them because they do receive free lunches. Good question. All right, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
And President Faub.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Policy 8220, alcohol inhalants, steroids, and drug abuse. The only real change here is that we included language regarding medical marijuana use. Rehabilitating that.
Any questions? None? Motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Great, motion carries.
All right, policy 8300, student discipline.
Oh, no. Tobacco. Oh, oh, oh. Sorry, out of order. 8230.
We're going to do a new one. Thank you. All right, only changes there were that we defined tobacco as it's written in the statute.
Didn't we add the mechanical cigarettes?
Oh, e-cigarettes, yeah, I think, because that's what was in the statute, right? Yes, perfect. Yep.
It's amazing what I'm tracking.
I applaud you for tracking that.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Great, Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Great, Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support for that?
Second.
If there's no discussion, take the vote.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, was that, did we have that rule challenged by students who argued? Superintendent, no? Was that rule challenged by students?
Not yet.
Well, now it won't be, because we have a new policy, right?
We'll still challenge.
Okay, all right.
Good, all right, now on to 8300, Student Discipline. All right, so, this one was amended to reflect changes in the statute as related to inclusion and restraint. We also added the policy regarding, sorry, corporal punishment. It was only a rule, but should have been included in policy, so now that is also included in policy. And the statute also requires that we provide PBIS training, so that is now included in that policy as well.
Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion to approve? Support.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Any questions? Discussion?
All right, Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I wanna, again, thanks Ms. Pitts, and Ms. Schottke, and the rest of the team on the Policy Committee for all their time with it.
Yeah, I appreciate, I mean, I know it's time-consuming, but it's so much better than dropping all policies on us in one meeting, so.
This is us.
Which is why there's so many mistakes with this one. Because it was done that way last night.
This meeting is shorter because I'm on that committee, otherwise I'd hold everybody up wordsmithing it here. All right, Dr. Flores, would you like to make a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we separate the administrative appointments to vote on them separately.
So, we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda grouping minus the administrative appointments.
Support.
All right, so moved.
And I just wanna note that this, included in this is a second reading of the policies that we approved first reading before, so, please take the vote.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you have a motion for approval of the administrative appointments?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Discussion?
I brought the matter up and asked that it be separated, because, one, in reviewing the packet earlier, actually, I had to review it twice and to note this change. The administrative recommendations or appointment recommendations list qualifications for various positions. One of those positions, I questioned whether or not we are meeting minimum requirements for qualifications. And so, first, for information purposes, I'd like to ask what the minimum qualifications are for a principal. And then, secondly, I'd like to ask, you know, why it is that we're placing people in positions that may not meet those minimum qualifications. But it was my understanding that, and I could be wrong, that one must at least have an advanced degree and several years of teaching experience, successful teaching experience, in order to lead a school.
Okay, so, we can answer the question. In the future, I think it'd be good if we have, like, more in-depth context questions to have them before the motion's entertained, so. But we've got the motion on the table, get somebody to answer the question, yeah.
Actually, I have, we'll have two people come to the table, Mrs. Pitts and Dr. Gorman.
Is Ms. Pitts here?
Yep. Come on, yep.
She's just quiet.
So, Dr. Flores, your questions about the requirements for principalship?
First, what are the minimum requirements?
Would you like me to explain? I actually know if you like.
Okay, great, great.
So, to receive a job as a principal in the state of Michigan, you have to, if you're given a position and you do not have a master's degree in educational leadership, you have six months to enroll in a program and three years to complete the program.
What is, what are our, what are our minimums, Grand Rapids Public Schools? What are?
So Sharon will read our policy, but I'm just referencing state language, Dr. Flores.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have to, it'll take a minute for me to connect up to...
No problem. I ask these questions based on experience here in the district and having gone through that process to be appointed an administrator in historical years, if you will, or on a historical basis. I do recall that we had some minimums, but things do change.
I came with limited technology. I can access the job description, it will take me a second if Ms. Pitts can't pull it out. Did you get it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pull that one up, please.
No, I can fill some time.
Okay, that is...
I asked the question because I think it's in, okay.
Okay, so, at least three years' successful teaching experience at the secondary level, and hold a valid Michigan School Administrator Certificate, or not later than six months after employment begins, enrolls in a program leading to certification as a school administrator. Completion of the program must occur within three years of hire. So, those are our required. We do have preferred, and that's the master's degree in secondary education, supervision or education, experience as a principal in an urban school district. So, those must be the ones that you're, that you were referring to. And those are our preferred, but our required are three years of successful teaching experience in secondary.
Does that answer your question?
Well, yes. I'm gonna vote no on this, because I believe that we need to be hiring the most qualified individuals as possible in our district, especially when we look at the history and pattern of hiring principals in our district for other schools, our specialty school programs. You know, we have people with advanced degrees, masters and doctorate degrees, leading our schools and our preferred choices. But when it comes to an African-American isolated, racially-isolated school, you know, we have a lesser bar. And I guess, you know, I wanna make it publicly known that we have to hold, I think, a higher standard to schools that are racially-isolated to provide greater leadership, certainly proven leadership, to move the bar forward, so.
May I?
I just wanna make one comment. So, while I absolutely respect Dr. Flores' no vote, I wanna remind the board that, in a way, this is a vote supporting the process that the administration puts in place for vetting principals. We do not vet the principals, the administration vets the principals.
I understand that.
And if we have systemic concerns with how principals are vetted, we need to address those questions, not the individuals themselves.
And this is why I raise that question. I think it is systemic, it's a systemic issue that we need to, you know, lead the way, and therefore, my comment.
You have a question?
Just, I wondered, how many applicants did we have for this position? Do you know? Can you tell us, or?
So, we had well over 20 applicants for the position. I'd like to say that, I'm voting yes on this, because I trust the process. I know that there have been a lot of things put in place to make sure, I'm quite sure that the success of this high school is very important to the superintendent, the administration, the board, the district. And I would also say that, even though I have a couple of advanced degrees, that advanced degrees alone does not make one qualified to be doing this work. And so, I think the work that needs to be done is very important, and I trust that we're making a decision that's important and successful, that will make the school successful, so.
And I would like to just let the board know that we don't just go on a interview. We have demonstrations that have to be shown, and it's a rigorous process that we involve other stakeholders in also. So, it's not just one or two people based on an interview, a 30-minute interview deciding these things. We really do do a lot more than we used to do with principal selections. We have quite a rigorous process with principal selection. We'd be happy at any time to share that process. Do you include teaching staff, support staff, parents in? Parents, teachers, students when they're around, community members, if they, if we have a business partner or a community member. Try to be, because it's really important to the success of the principal that the community embrace and hurt. That's really their principle, and if they like the person and feel that that person is competent and do a good job, they're more likely to stand behind that person and really assist them. So, that's why we put this process in several years ago, and we have found it to be a really good process. And when the principal comes in with the support of the teachers, the students, the community, now in this particular time, students weren't here, but when students are here, and quite frankly, they, they're incredible, and their rigor in terms of, their questions a lot of times are a lot better than the adults, wouldn't you say, Dr. Gorman?
Yes, absolutely.
So.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. If there's no more discussion, we have a vote.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items, although I sent the email out, but I wanted to note, we have no work session next Monday. It was a very light agenda. We're waiting on some items, so we'll have a very full agenda in September, but this also allows us to attend the reception that's scheduled, so just wanted to verbally note that. Public comment for non-agenda items?
We have none.
Superintendent's comments?
No comment, Dr. Fobbe.
Right, Ms. Schottke?
Sure, yeah, just Michelle and the Student Advancement Foundation. I just want to echo the thanks that were said earlier today. We just wanna thank you for doing right by our students, so, thanks for your work.
I also agree, and also, I know that there's a lot of work that people will be doing over the next few weeks, so, appreciate that work, and I guess, I don't think I'll be one of them, but those that will, I appreciate it, so.
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
Just wanna thank Mr. Klump parents for that explanation. I definitely have paid particular attention to those, as the local policy is pretty important, I think, to our community, so it was good to get that explanation. Because I was curious about, you know, like you said, we only had, what, two, well, I didn't know the intricacies of masonry work and the difficulty, obviously, in finding folks, but thank you, Ms. Schottke, for your insight on that, too. But aside from that, no, that was just my comment, just wanted to speak to that and, I guess, remind us of the importance of it, and thank the Student Advancement Foundation, of course, as well, for everything that they do. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the administration for leading us in a review of structural and institutional racism and other factors that affect a school district and society in general in our retreat last week. I think that we have to keep these things in perspective as we deal with policy issues